Good day, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is nine oh four A M. Notices for this hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, September eighth and Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on those same days. The Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's M I S staff, and I thank them for their assistance. And they will mute all participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. We have two agenda items today. Bill's number one eighty-five dash thirty-six and bill number one five six dash thirty-six. Bill one eighty-five dash thirty-six C O R is introduced by Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to transfer lot number one zero one two-two dash fourteen new dash R one municipality of Dedido, formerly known as the Dedido Solid Waste Transfer Station to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency for their headquarters. Bill number one five six dash thirty-six C O R is introduced by Senator V Anthony Ada, Senator Christopher M Duennius, Senator James C Moylan. It's an act to add a new section one zero one zero seven to chapter ten, title twenty Guam Code annotated relative to adding civil penal civil orders of abatements as a remedy for public and private nuisances. I acknowledge the presence of my colleagues this this morning, beginning with my vice chair, Senator Sabina Perez. Good morning, Senator Minority Leader, Senator Chris Duennius, Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Telatike Green. Thank you, senators, for joining us this morning. All right, so we have a lot of people signed up to testify on this bill, so we're going to proceed right away. Senator Brown, are you here with us as well? Oh, yes, okay.
Yes, I am speaker, sorry. Thank you.
All right, and Senator Brown, of course. And all right, so we're going to get right to it. We'll begin with an introduction of the bill by the primary sponsor, which is Senator Sabina Perez. Senator Perez.
This is Massey Speaker, and good morning to everybody here. I also want to thank you for hosting this public hearing and hearing this bill expeditiously. Bill number one eighty-five dash thirty-six sponsored by myself at the request of Guam E P A would transfer the former Dedido Solid Waste Transfer Station to Guam E P A for their headquarters. Since nineteen ninety-five, Guam E P A has been operating in buildings that are not presently owned by them. In March of two thousand and twenty-one, Guam E P A was a recipient of three million dollars from the total award from the Department of Interior Capital Improvement Projects in which Guam E P A can use that funding for architectural engineering design and site improvements for a proposed building. Guam E P A may spend its consolidated grant funding towards a new building, provided that these funds are not used for real property leases that is owned by the government. Under the current terms of the consolidated grant, Guam E P A has received three point nine million per fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and is expected to receive approximately three point two million every year through the life of the five-year cycle and has the ability to earmark a portion of of these funds to cover building project costs. The property stated in the bills owned by the government of Guam and the municipality of Dedido in an unoccupied, undeveloped, and adversely impacted state as a result of industrial activity and use. In cooperation of U S E P A, Guam E P A officials are able to leverage federal funds and technical resources at no cost to our local government to perform cleanup and remedial action on this property for community use and benefit. These resources are made possible through the work of U S E P A's Superfund Technical Assessment and Response Team. With the allowable costs under their consolidated grant, real property designated and transferred to Guam E P A with full remediation would serve in the best interest of our island and ensure fiduciary responsibility of the agency funding, which is designated for facilities. Guam E P A can finally address its longstanding issue with the lack of a permanent home as the agency continues to modernize and build capacity to ensure Guam's environmental laws are upheld and enforced. I would like to thank Guam E P A, the Department of Land Management, for their work together to find this property and work out the details of what needs to be done to get this property within their Guam E P A's inventory. I thank and ask my colleagues in advance for their support on this measure to give Guam E P A a home. This is Massey.
This is Massey, Senator. I'd also like to add that we tried to, in advance of the hearing, get confirmation from the Department of Land Management as to ownership of the property. And we were told verbally, but not yet in writing, that this property is not property belonging to this Tomorrowland Trust. It belongs to the Department of D P W, and the transfer would be from D P W to E P A. Just so we will, but we will make sure as we continue with the marking up the bill that any technical language is inserted in there. Okay, and so now we will hear testimony. We will begin with the administrator of Guam E P A, Mr. Walter De Younger. Good morning, Walter, Director.
Good morning, Speaker. Good morning, senators. Thank you again for listening, hearing this bill on the floor to provide a written testimony. But I'd like to just talk about a few things. I've been in this agency for over twenty-five years, and some of the division heads that are also here have the same concerns that that we have or I have, that we don't have our own home. And so this is a big step for us to establish a Guam E P A as a standalone agency that we can, we can, you know, instead of using funds to pay rent, we're actually going to be hopefully using the funds to pay for our new home. One of the things about this property that people may say is like, well, first off, just to try to correct or update some of that. So this was two lots. One was under D P W for the solid waste transfer station. And then the second part was under Guam Incessional Land Commission. They combined the two lots that now equal to nine plus acres. And so maybe that's the minute that needs to be done. But the solid waste transportation is was under the administrative ownership or oversight of D P W, so that definitely needs to be included now. So some people will say, wow, that's a lot of property for the Guam E P A. Well, maybe it's not known, and it isn't in the bill, that there is, this is known contaminated property, and that was from that necessarily from the D P W operations as solid waste. But also there was a scrap metal yard facility there that went bankrupt. And and so so there was assessment done by U S E P A upon our request. And upon that, we just got word that there's going to be a cleanup. They submitted a budget to do the cleanup of that property. And that could go to up to about four point five million dollars. And so though this property seems like it's a great location because it's got, it's near Marine Drive. This property is contaminated. And one of the things and why we want, you know, again, like Deputy Vice, Michelle reminded me, you know, we did look at a lot of properties, and this one hit our hit our heart, close to our heart because we have a program that designates and does this type of work, which is the Brownfields Program. And at this point, I'm going to, allowable by you guys, I'm going to ask our deputy to expand on the Brownfields Program as part of my testimony, if that's okay, Speaker. Thank you.
Yes, of course, Deputy Director Michelle Lasmonza.
Thank you, Speaker. I appreciate the opportunity to to highlight and speak about our Brownfields Program. So our Brownfields Program is a grant, one twenty-eight A grant that we applied for through U S E P A. You know, they have five different grant categories. We applied for an assessment grant, which allows us to then contract the assessment and phase one, phase two assessments of these properties for contamination. So the Brownfields Program is really taking perceived or actual contaminated properties that were known to be used for industrial, commercial use and rehabilitate, redevelop those properties into for community benefit. So like Walter said, when we were looking at properties and we were we were shown the the Dedido Transfer Station property, we knew from from previous environmental site assessments done after the closure of of the Dedido Transfer Station that there may have been contamination on that property. And because it's, you know, been left sitting, you know, whether it be illegal dumping or, you know, other activities that were conducted after the closure, we knew that 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 property we could highlight as a reusable space. So we got the buy-in from from U S E P A. They fully supported, you know, us being able to use brownfield monies to identify any contamination on the property. And like Walt said, they they did a preliminary study. They took samples and identified some heavy metals on the property. So we know that there's there's contamination on the property. We know that there's still a lot of work ahead of us. But again, Brownfields money cannot be used unless the property belongs to, you know, the the belongs to the the entity that's requesting for the assessment. So we cannot expend any of that money or even request to expend that money until that property is officially Guam E P A's. But yes, this certainly will will be able to not only highlight an internal program, but also to to showcase that contaminated or perceived contaminated properties can be useful again and can serve a community benefit.
Thank you, Deputy Administrator. Can you please send to us whatever you have in writing that says it requires ownership or whatever it says it requires? And we'll include that in the committee report as well.
We'll do, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Administrator Walter.
Yes, sir. So I just wanted to list of that came up of contaminants of concern. So there was lead, arsenic, chromium, copper, pallium, zinc, fluoridine, T P H diesel, T P H motor oil, and P C B air chlorine. So this is all mostly, there's three piles of waste piles consolidated, which came from both lots. And so it's kind of contained into three piles. But this is what existing and the cleanup that's going to entail that U S E P A is going to be working, doing based on our request and their approval. And so, you know, again, it's, it is a prime location, but it's 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 contaminated. And for anybody else to be able to find and get the money to address this contamination, again, it's it is a gift. It is a little tainted, but we have the means to correct that thing and to build on it. And so that's why we humbly ask that you guys, this legislature supports this bill, provides this property to us, and we can move forward and finally build Guam E P A a home. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Administrator Walter De Younger. Is there anyone else from E P A who we should recognize or should be recognized? Walter? Is there anyone else from E P A who would like to speak at this point? If not, then we will move to the Administrator of the Guam Coastal Management Program Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Mr. Edwin Regis.
How today, Madam Speaker, how today, Honorable Senators? Thanks for the opportunity to provide some comments during this public hearing. I'll be talking about my responsibility as the Administrator for the Coast's Own Management Program in terms of assessing our enforceable policies in addition to our land use, man use planning responsibilities under five D C A, chapter one, article two. And and so for the most part, I just wanted to say that this this, we reviewed this project for federal consistency, and we found it consistent with our enforceable policies. And so one of the the benefits of this project, like the Administrator mentioned, was that it creates an opportunity to to obtain greater efficiencies. And so our very first policy in Executive Order seventy dash thirty-seven speaks to government modernization. And I think that there certainly is a great opportunity for modernization and to achieve benefits of modernization by creating the central headquarters. And right now, having worked with our great agency E P A, they're 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 operating out of different spaces. And so being able to bring them into a central headquarters that sets the foundation for operationalizing, you know, or adding to their operations to so they can achieve an optimization and execution in their very, very important mandate. So we found that as a real plus in terms of being consistent with our requirement to review federal funds as a thorough activity for the purposes of being consistent with the Coast's Own Management Act. I would also want to talk about our land use planning process, land use planning functions with, under the Bureau of Stats and Plans, in which we look at the compatibility of this government facility. It is national practice that government facilities be cited in commercial zones. But what I would point out is that under our current zoning law that light industrial does allow for highest use in commercial zones. So it is consistent with our zoning, with our zoning policy. I think overall, this this project will be beneficial, both from the land standpoint as well as our responsibilities under the Coast's Own Management Act. This concludes my testimony, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Regis. Well, now hear from the Guam Solid Waste Authority Chairman Andrew Gill. And if you could introduce everyone else who's here from the Guam Solid Waste Authority.
Good morning, Speaker Chalahi. I believe, well, my name is Andrew Gill. I am the chairman of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors. We also have Larry Gass on, who is our current general manager of the Guam Solid Waste Authority. We also have Peggy Denny, who's in attendance. She is also a member of the Board of Directors. I don't see anybody else. Just, like I said, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like I said, my name is Andrew Gill. I am the chairman of the Board of the Guam Solid Waste Authority. I have been on the board since about two thousand and thirteen. I I'm speaking here as a member of the board and not representing the board itself because we have not, the board itself hasn't had an opportunity to meet as a board and discuss this matter. As I only heard about this bill when I got the invitation to this hearing. We were scheduled to have a board meeting this week, but that may be in jeopardy due to some possible issues with the open, the changes, the recent changes in the open government law and the virtual aspect requiring certain things that we have, we have put in place yet. However, that being said, as a member of the board, I don't have any objections to to this transfer of of property to the Guam E P A. During receivership, this transfer station was closed after the Harmon Transfer Station was opened, and the Harmon Transportation also became the household hazardous waste acceptance location. And I do remember, I do recall, as being a member of the board, that we discussed what to do with the the property, and the issue of remediation was the central topic. And this looks like an opportunity for the island to not only have this property remediated and to the, you know, to the proper regulations, but would also enable E P A to have its new headquarters, which I have no opinion one way or the other, but I just think that's good. I agree with with Walter in that regard. The only other comment I would have, Speaker Chalahi, would be there is, there is an act. There is a section in G S W A's enabling statute that discusses land transfers, but I don't sure how that might apply here. I'm just advising you or your legal counsel to review that. It's it's ten G C A, chapter fifty-one A, section two oh three, and it discusses transfers of Department of Land Management. So I'm not sure if that is applicable or not. I'm just asking you that as you're crossing your I's and dotting your Ts and working with Department of Land Management to see if anything there applies. I don't believe it does, but I just wanted to share that with you. So like I said, I don't have, we have no objections. As a member of the board, I have no objections for this property transfer. I will let Larry Gass speak for the management of Guam Solid Waste Authority.
Thank you very much, Chairman Gill. And Mr. Gass, is there anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Speaker. Yes, originally, when people hear that property is contaminated, it generally raises hairs on the back of the neck, and people start to worry. Guam E P A and G S W A had a meeting with U S E P A and the remediation group. The remediation is state-of-the-art that they are planning for this property, and it should have no issues whatsoever as far as Guam Solid Waste Authority is concerned. And a second thought for everybody to consider is that this is technically a brownfield. It is a contaminated area. Once remediation is done, it's going to take everything below a hazardous level. And what better to do if there is minuscule amounts of stuff left in the soils or on the land around than to put a parking lot and concrete on top of it? Then you're not going to have the instances of it, get it, possibility of it getting into the groundwater because it is now covered by an impervious surface. This would probably be the best option for this property is to have an office complex and parking placed on it after the remediation is completed by U S E P A. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gass. Could you please speak to the the transfer station? So could you please confirm that this is not being used anymore as a transfer station? And how has G S W A accommodated what used to be done there?
This transfer station was basically closed and when the Harmon Transfer Station was opened and all of the activities were translocated from Dedido to Harmon. And Harmon Transfer Station is now the main transfer station on the island.
All right. Okay, we'll talk about it more as we go on. But we did receive testimony, just as the hearing began, from the Municipal Planning Council of Dedido. They are concerned, they are objecting to this bill on the basis that they need a Dedido Solid Waste Transfer Station. And so we'll talk about that more. I sent that, I'll send that to you while while others are testifying, so we could talk about that a little bit more. All right, so we will hear now. Or is there, Ms. Denny, did you also want to add something from your perspective as a board member of Guam Solid Waste?
Senator, I would just like to say that I'm in full support of this bill. And as a former employee of Guam E P A a while back, I am very, very pleased that they will now have a permanent new home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now have Mr. Kumita Tao, are you here? Mr. Kumita Tao?
Aftername, ma'am.
Afterday.
So I was.
Can you turn on your camera if you're here for this bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, thank you.
So I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'll go ahead and speak for a little bit. So G P A, we are in full support of this bill for the transfer to Guam E P A. We believe that, you know, home headquarters for that type of facility is is important to the community. I, without getting too technical, I can provide written testimony on some of the stuff that we would like to reserve, such as easements and access roads. And then, I don't know, I apologize for coming late to the meeting, but I did not see anything regarding the zoning. So as a recipient of some government property for this facility in Mininaw, the zoning was part of the, in the bill. So it'll be zoned to the specific use. As an example, ours was written to zone P F, public, public facility. So I didn't see that in the bill. I think it would be a good to put it in the bill. And that's all I have, ma'am.
All right, I did see on the maps and maybe that when the when the two lots were consolidated, they they seem to have reserved a utilities right of way, but we will, it's just a right of way. We'll confirm that with land management. Okay, and we'll discuss that further. All right, is there anyone else who would like to testify on this bill? All right, if not, then I'm going to open it up for senators to discuss. So Senator Perez, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So, yeah, I guess the, you know, I do appreciate all the recommendations and comments. I think perhaps regarding the, yeah, if Larry Gass can talk about the Dedido Transfer Station and I guess what was their decision in regards to, I know, and the concern that was raised by one of the mayors in regarding, you know, the the decision that was made by Guam Solid Waste Authority pertaining to the closure of this transfer station, if you can.
Senator Perez, Senator, my apologies. Why don't I read into the records so that we all are on the same page here as we discuss this? We just received this again as the hearing began. So this is, we had asked for the Municipal Planning Council's concurrence on the bill, and we received it as the hearing began, and it is a resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash fourteen from the Dedido Municipal Planning Council. Be it resolved by the Dedido Municipal Planning Council, whereas on Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Chairperson Savaris informed members of Bill number one eighty-five dash thirty-six C O R about the request to transfer the above lot to Guam E P A to construct a new headquarters for the agency. Whereas members expressed their concern for the need to have a solid waste transfer station for residents to dispose of household trash be brought back to the area. And whereas members stressed that the need for residents to have an alternate facility to dispose of household trash rather than relying on G S W A regular trash services. And whereas, after further discussions by members, a motion was made to disapprove this request to transfer a portion of lot number one zero one two-two dash fourteen to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. Be it resolved by the Guam, be it resolved that the Guam Environmental Protection Agency worked with the Department of Land Management to identify other properties for their headquarters. Therefore, be it further resolved that the Chairperson of the Dedido Municipal Planning Council certified to, and the Secretary attested adoption thereof, and the copies same be thereafter transmitted to the Speaker of the thirty-sixth Guam Legislature, the Department of Land Management, and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. This is dated the fourteenth day of September. It's signed by Melissa Savaris, Mayor of Dedido, and Yvonne Akda, who is Secretary of the Municipal Planning Council. All right, and so sorry to for that interruption, Senator Perez, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. So, yeah, maybe the question I have is for Guam E P A. So just to clarify, I know Deputy Director, you're mentioning that you cannot move forward with the cleanups if the land is not in your, under your, you know, administration or control. And if you could talk, so basically, if the property is not transferred to Guam E P A, it'd be more difficult to to clean up the site which has been identified. I mean, there were contaminants such as lead, you know, heavy metals are present, P C B. So these things. You know, heavy metals are present PCB. So these things, you know, if the land is not transferred, it would be more difficult to clean these contaminants which could potentially end up in our drinking water. Is that is that a valid assessment?
That it's fairly accurate, you know, that when we requested that they do the assessment and then when the assessment showed that there is contamination on the property, that's what we we in our discussion expanded to be, well, we'd like to build our home there, our headquarters. So and so based on our those discussions, that's where we got US EPA to come in and say, and again, just state, yes, we'll do this cleanup. One, because it is a a company that went bankrupt, you know, salvage company went bankrupt and two other economic reasons that Guam doesn't can't put it, but for the reuse of Guam EPA's headquarters or home is a key part of that. And so if that is not there, I don't know. I can't speak for US EPA. So I don't know what is written and what is negotiated as far as them doing the cleanup, but they would still keep to that if the future reuse is not going to be for Guam EPA's headquarters. So I mean, I can only, I can't say that that's for sure that they would, they wouldn't do the cleanup. But that is part of the discussions on why they are willing to come in and clean up for this site. Not only because we don't have the potential contaminator, but for the potential reuse for Guam, Guam EPA's headquarters.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Yes, there is a super fund. You know, obviously, they call it super fund for a reason that meant to clean up sites that they can't identify any responsible parties or if they're not present to provide that funding. Right, so. But being that, you know, USC is in support of rebuild, finding a home for Guam EPA. And I think it does, you know, this is an opportunity to to kill, you know, do two things with one one effort, right? You're rebuilding, potentially rebuilding your a home as well as cleaning up the site. So it's like you're walking the walk, not just talking the talk. I think that's that's what's kind of a interesting about this is that it will relieve the environmental burdens from these toxins and as well as create something positive for the community. So yeah, thank you for that. And I know Larry Gass, there was a lot of consideration about transfer stations, right? And the the financial cost of opening them up and perhaps there's other solutions that can solve. You know, I guess with I understand the the there's issues with illegal dumping and there's other measures in play. In fact, there's one bill that I, a couple of bills that I've introduced to address that. But if you can talk to more about the the financial reasons for, you know, the closure of this transfer station to Guam Solid Waste. Or maybe
I can, I can go ahead and and give you a little bit of a background. If you look at Orange County, Florida, which is home to Orlando and Disney World and Universal Studios, there are two transfer stations in that entire county and one landfill. On the island of Guam, we have three transfer stations and a landfill. We have more disposal opportunities than an area with more than ten times the population and more than ten times the visitors. We have a satisfactory amount of transfer stations. Matter of fact, we basically have too many, in my opinion. We are looking at increasing services throughout the island. If that happens, there will be less need for transfer stations. And with that happening, there may be a time in the near future where the transfer stations actually will be closing rather than reopening. The transfer stations are by far the the most labor intensive and costly way that we handle waste. It's actually cheaper and easier for us to go to the house and pick it up and collect it rather than having a person physically there to estimate the load, physically there to collect the monies, to produce a receipt and then to have somebody direct to where it goes, then have it placed in there. Then that has to be picked up and hauled to disposal itself. So the transfer stations are not an economical way to handle the wasteload for Guam. We would not, we see no reason to add a fourth transfer station in the Dedado area. The Harmon Transfer Station provides service for the north end of the island and it is a satisfactory facility for that at this time.
Thank you so much, General Manager. So maybe I'll just reserve any questions for later, if anything. Thank you, Speaker.
Senator Speaker, to my I just wanted to add a little historical perspective to Larry's testimony. When, like I said, I've been on the Solid Waste Authority Board since two thousand thirteen. And during that time in the receivership, the there was decisions made to remediate all the transfer stations, existing transport stations except the digital transfer station. They, this, there was a decision to open up the Harmon Transfer Station, the existing lot there, a DPW lot, and make it also accept household hazardous waste. And after that was open and the digital transfer station was was closed, there was a discussion, there was a discussion about what to do with the Dedido Transfer Station. There was, we did get feedback from the mayors that they did want to reopen it. However, it was a decision based on similar feedback. Larry Gass wasn't there at the time, but the receiver's operations manager, Chase Anderson, also said the same, said very similar things about the number of transfer stations per square mile. It's not typical. This is, this is not usually how a a solid waste operation would operate. You would not have this many transfer stations for an area this this size. That plus the information about the remediation costs. And at that particular time, we weren't out of receivership and there are still, there are still costs associated with completing all of the consent decree projects. We had decided we would not, we had recommended not, the GSWB board recommended that we did not do anything with the digital transfer station and reopen it. And regarding the mayor's opinion about the opening more and what Larry had mentioned about additional measures for us to address illegal dumping. We are considering, as you know, we are considering with the governor's legal team, a, an option to implement island-wide trash collection. With island-wide trash collection, we would then collect trash from all, all residents, all residents of the island who are in single-family homes or in multifamily dwellings, less than four four units or less. And and our, it is our hope and, you know, our, 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 actually our belief that this will help address illegal dumping that is occurring on the island.
All right, thank you. Senator Paris? Any other questions?
No, no, thank you, Speaker.
All right, thank you. If I could just ask if you could just reiterate Administrator EPA Walter, if so you you've already received the money to do the assessment, the assessment is done. And then Michelle Lastimos, a deputy administrator, put in the chat that the last environmental site assessment report estimated remediation of the three plus acres formerly used as a Dedido Transfer Station to range between two million to two hundred million. And was it your testimony that you are receiving, if you are able to own the property and use it for your building, that you will receive money to remediate? Fully, fully remediate?
Yes, Speaker, so again, based on the discussions and negotiations that we had with US EPA and the potential reuse for Guam EPA to build their home or headquarters on this property, they've actually assigned four point five million dollars already for that intention and for that purpose. They have the property for the, so that we could use build our home as a, and use this as a brownfield example.
So the four point five million is for the the actual remediation and then you, and then they were also going to help you build the building?
Well, so we have annually, through a consolidated grant, we get about three point two million. And right now, we currently use about eight thousand dollars a month for rent. And so they basically said with our consolidated grant, you can also use that same amount for payment off of our of our our new headquarters or home. And so so when people look at the three point two million, it's, so that's our, that's our operating cost, our overhead, total operating cost that we get from Feds as far as one grant. And so they will allow us to use that portion or what we see applicable to using that and keep our operations up on an annual basis. So yes, we have that agreement with them as well.
All right, and then would any part of this transaction require that EPA transfer property to the federal EPA? Or is he going to maintain?
Yeah, yes, this was all the state with the Guam in the toy. None of it will go to the federal government.
Okay, and then we had asked land management to testify, of course, and we don't have anything in writing from them right now, but one of the other issues that I had asked both land management and the mayor, Mayor Savaris is to whether the adjacent owners were aware and to give them an opportunity to testify. So I do not have a list of the adjacent owners and I would try to invite them to submit testimony if I can get a list of that that we've asked for already. But I guess if they find out it's contaminated, I I would expect that they would be happy to have it remediated if they're adjacent to this property. Can we get those in writing that maybe the assessment that you have and the estimates of the cleanup just so that we can also put those into the committee report?
Yes, ma'am. We can provide the reports and documents that we have with US EPA.
Okay, great. And then just one more question is for BSP. You said you did a consistency review already. And you said optimization and add and additions to Guam EPA's operations. And I guess, I don't know, BSP or EPA, just to explain how having this building or allowing you to consolidate is going to increase your operations or increase your ability to form your mission?
Well, I can take maybe a stab at that first part of the question in terms of consistency. So one of the, one of the things, Madam Speaker, that I that I left out in my earlier testimony was that in the North and Central Land Use Plan, there's a strong policy on advancing smart growth initiatives. And when you're looking at repurposing brownfields, that really fits within the the standards of achieving smart growth. And so looking at the best use in terms of future use, this is very, very consistent with achieving that policy. I would somewhat be you know, a little bit worried about trying to reactivate or reestablish the transfer station because that then is taking a past use or previous use that was decommissioned. I wouldn't even, I would actually argue it would, it's not even decommissioned, still kind of in existence in terms of the contamination that's there. And putting that pressure in terms of a future use that would be inconsistent with things like, you know, smart growth and resource protection. So by having EPA really be the one to take, take the lead and to lead by example and demonstrating how they can repurpose a brownfield to to create a functional operations that would be in the best interest of certainly their capabilities, which services so many other things in terms of environmental stewardship and protection. So with with kind of taking that in consideration in terms of the benefits, that was more than enough to ensure that it was consistent with their enforceable policies.
All right. And if you could just briefly, I know it should be, you know, common sense, but just Walter, you could put on the record the benefits of to your operations for consolidation. Will we be able to expand your, your, you know, regulatory functions?
I'm tired.
Oh, your consolidation into this one building as allow EPA to expand its, you know,
with the acreage that is provided, we we can actually now do a lot of the things that be, we're fitting into our rental properties currently. Some of the big ticket items is like, you know, the large vehicles and doing admission testing on them, buses, that you've actually built a roundabout that the buses can actually drive through, we could do a testing. And they go out the same way. Currently, what we have to do now is drive into our lot to do the test and then they got to reverse out or reverse, you know, it's complicated. We also have currently our our facility houses a lab that services the safe drinking water. And so we'll be able to expand on that and add add more things to that. We also have need of rooms for our boats that we do marine monitoring, sediment monitoring. So we need a boathouse for that, which we currently sit outside in 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 the weather. And any boat owner knows, so the more you you protect your boat, the beast damage it is because boats cost a lot to maintain. And so there's a whole bunch of things. We we have, we don't have the facility that can has a locker room or showers and our guys go out in the field sometimes and that's added benefit for our teams. They could come in and and basically do some type of decon. And I'm not saying that they're very contaminated, but at least they can clean up, take off their clothes, their work clothes, bring it, put it in a bag and go home and know that there's no contamination if there was any any cross contamination being moved from site to the office to their homes. So there's a lot of things that we can list and we would gladly list them. That's how, that's how we came up with our building plan. There's all these things that we wanted to add, if we have the ability to, and this property gives us that ability if it's if it's provided to Guam EPA. I think Michelle has a couple of other things that she might
The PD Administrator, Michelle Lastmosa.
Thank you, Speaker. So in addition to all the things that Walter mentioned, part of part of the the programs I still oversee include our emergency response programs. So in talking to our grants for this morning, you know, kind of planting the seeds to to ask whether or not part of our grant funding can be used to to support a training facility. You know, we we currently do not have a training room. As you know, we do have we do issue out certifications for, let's say, our pesticide enforcement program where we certify those folks who handle any sort of pesticide. So right now, we're doing intermittent because of the pandemic and the social distancing. We aren't able to 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 hold very many examinations. So having a dedicated training room, even a conference room, you know, for for larger scale training opportunities, you know, we do have partnerships with the fire department, with Guam Homeland Security. And then our federal counterparts, so having a dedicated training room and it would be beneficial. So and also equipment. So we don't have a dedicated equipment room where we can house equipment in a controlled environment. You know, we we have to find the space between between the two buildings, which is an ideal for the longevity of our equipment. So having a training room, having the dedicated equipment room would be beneficial in addition to everything that Walter had mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm so sorry. One more question for Mr. Gass. Mr. Gass, if we, I want to close the loop on the concerns of the mayor. If, is the Harmon Transfer Station adequate for the purposes of the people of Dedido prior to you implementing another island? prior to you implementing another island-wide, you know, pickup service?
Yes, uh, Dedido has been closed for years and that is the transfer station that services the north end of the island. And it has not had any issues handling the amount of customers that generally come.
Would, would solid waste be able to open this property up as a transfer station without remediating it?
No, uh, we probably would not be able to utilize it as a parking lot if it was not remediated. The, the lead contamination is at a hazardous level and needs to be remediated basically immediately uh, as soon as EPA can do it. That's part of the reason probably that the receiver, uh, wanted to close that and open a different transfer station is because the cost would exceed any of the funds that they had available.
All right. Sisus Mossi, thank you, everyone. And I will now recognize Senator Chris Bries.
This is Mossi, Madam Chair. Certainly I'm satisfied with the current testimony by the regulatory agencies that this meets the highest and best use of this property. Um, notwithstanding the objections of the mayor, I can attest, um, you know, to Chairman Andy Gels, uh, grappling with this issue in the prior administration, this is, was front and center as well. And we had to address this. Um, there's been numerous requests to open up that location once again. But as been stated by Mr. Gast and others, uh, that is a very problematic area. And in my opinion, uh, this is the best way to approach getting two things done. First of all, the, the cleanup and also the collateral benefit of having EPA to have its own home. I think Director Leon Guerrero has articulated that, um, you know, their ability to fund the debt service uh, is there and it's something that the government should be setting example on doing is, is building on their own property and, uh, and, and having the highest and best use. So barring any, um, other, other testimony, I'm very inclined to support this. Uh, thank you also Edwin Rages. Uh, you know, that was a very, um, solid presentation from BSP. I don't expect anything less. There's a great group of folks over there. So this time I just want to listen into the balance of the conversation, Madam Speaker. But it looks as though this is, uh, is this a very proper thing to do. So just Mossi.
So just Mossi, Senator. Senator Anthony Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Uh, to Administrator Leon Guerrero. I think the, the question I have is that would this be the, the best location to, to home EPA? Being that majority of the business are located down in central and, uh, you know, the central part of the island. This is the most.
Yes, I'm sorry, Senator. Uh, so, you know, in our look, we actually looked at other government properties throughout the island and tried to assess what is best for, for Guam EPA and the island. We came up with, if we could, where we came up with a plan that if we can get USCPA on board and clean up this site that is over our offer. Uh, again, the twofold where we're doing a cleanup as well as rebuilding, that, that just kind of exceeded all other locations because we're actually doing a cleanup at the property, which is, you know, again, over our sole source offer. And so that just, that, that elevated it above any other site, uh, besides the location. I know that you may say, well, should we be more centrally located? And, uh, again, uh, the remediate, the possibility of mediating this contamination just outweighs the actual location of 15 or 20 minute drive, uh, being not as centrally located. So I would say in my opinion, and based on the discussions and we're doing, it is the most appropriate location for Guam EPA to build their home.
Yeah, definitely. I think that, you know, when you're, you're able to kill two birds with one stone, it does make a lot of sense. Uh, the, probably the other question I would have is, uh, the, the time when the facility had closed down to today, there was no one held accountable or responsible for the actual cleanup of that area?
So, uh, uh, if you recall, I mentioned that there was a scrapyard or metal scrap company that, that went belly up, uh, bankrupt. They were, they were one of the contributor, probably the main contributor as well as, um, you know, potential for the solid waste, uh, program and they were under DPW. So of course we couldn't go after the, we had actually NOBs on the companies that went bankrupt. So we did pursue it, but, uh, based on their, their status, we couldn't, we couldn't do anything about it. As far as having them take for the cleanup, uh, the Solid Waste Authority, uh, to consider the receivership, they did their best to do it. On top of the, the contamination that was found in the, in the waste piles and other areas, there's, there's a large amount of tires, bundle tires that are on this property too, that we would need to figure out how to get out. But, uh, so there is, uh, there was efforts to get to the violator or potential violators. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we couldn't pursue them. And so that, this is just one of the ways that we knew that there was a problem and how could we address it? And so that's how this family evolved. But, uh, there was efforts to do that. Again, when the company goes bankrupt, we can't pursue them. And so, uh, you know, that, that leads us to a different aspect that we could talk about later, you know, about, um, insurance and things of that nature. But, uh, yes, we did pursue it, but we couldn't, we couldn't actually get the violator to clean up.
Okay. Well, you know, um, like I said, and I'm, I'm, I'm on board for anything to give the EPA a home finally. And, you know, it's, it's been a long time coming and I hope that we'll be able to work out all the, the issues that we have with this property. And let, let's get it working. Let's get it worked on. And, um, like I said, if you can kill two birds with one stone, remediating the property with the, the contaminants and building a home at the, at the same time, then, uh, you know, let's, let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Tite, you're recognized.
So just Mossi, Madam Speaker. Um, you know, I think this is a win-win situation for everyone. And, um, my concern only is, you know, I, I just don't think that the municipal council of Dedido actually knows everything that is transpiring here. And the reason why this is, um, a chosen location, uh, along with the mediation of what's going to happen to the property. I think maybe EPA, if you have a chance, Walter, I think it's important to address the municipal council directly and, and provide more information to, to ease their mind because for them to put a resolution together that says that they disapprove this request to transfer portion of the lot. I think they're not getting all the information and it just may be as simple as that. So Walter, can I ask that you visit?
Yes, Senator. As, as soon as this series up, I'll try to schedule a meeting with, with the mayor and vice mayor. And I'll bring the documents that showed the contamination at the property and we'll have an extended conversation with them.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. And, uh, Mr. Gas, uh, you, you mentioned how the transfer station in Harmon is able to, you know, handle anything that comes in their way and have been doing. So, um, that's good to hear. So my only concern now is considering what's happened in Dedido. I just don't want to see, you know, another area become contaminated, you know, and that you're taking every precautions to avoid any type of contamination at the current location in Harmon right now. Can I be rest assured that you're taking all those precautions?
Yes, Senator. All of our area that we have any waste products that are handled or processed or stored or impervious surfaces, uh, they're either paved or concrete, either asphalt or concrete. Uh, we have a stormwater collection system, uh, that is able to be cleaned and maintained. We also have a hazardous waste facility where these items can be properly disposed of. And it is all covered, even the transfer from the vehicles, uh, that the people bring the materials to the facility for the disposal, uh, it's completely covered. So even if it's raining, those materials will not, uh, get into the environment.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that. That's reassuring, considering what's going on right now. I mean, just, you know, finding out this information. And I'm pretty sure that the, uh, the surrounding neighbors, Walter, um, very important that the speaker brought up, that they know what's going on. And I'm, I'm concerned too, if, if EPA has taken the opportunity to test the areas in that, in that area, just to see how far it's, uh, contamination has, has reached and hopefully the, yeah. So that being said, um, it's a little bit confusing too, with regards to the money, the funding part. You know, you, you're getting 3.2 million dollars a year. You're using 800,000 of that for rental. Um, however, you're allowed to use the 800,000 for rental for, for the building. But the remaining amount, um, I mean, this is going to cost, the architectural design, has it been completed yet? Have you, uh, prepared your timeline for cost cleanup, which was brought up earlier about how much it's going to cost for the cleanup? How much is the building plus the maintenance? Please don't forget, Walter, to incorporate the maintenance costs in that. Many buildings are built and they don't incorporate that section of it and they start falling apart. So, and then the timeline. Uh, the timeline on, on, on reaching this goal, the final end result. Those things are really going to be important to have. It's a plan that's given to the legislature so that we can comfortably vote for this piece of legislation, knowing exactly where it's, what's going to happen to the end. So the architectural design, it's just something, ask you real quick, cause you mentioned something about the building design. Has that?
So Senator, so, uh, we will, we will lay out the plan, we'll give it to you. We've been working on it for years. And I'm sure there was other plans before that, that we're, this is the closest we've did. But, uh, but the, just, just for, uh, this hearing sake, so we have 3 billion, um, dedicated from CIP money from DOI. And so once we, uh, meet the, um, get this property or even before that, um, we're going to use, we're going to start off with, uh, an architectural design, uh, RFP that we already have the paperwork in order. Uh, we've worked with DPW as the, uh, lead construction agency for government of Guam. So we're just, everything, all the paperwork's in place. Uh, so once we get this, uh, settled, then we'll open up that RFP and vote again, uh, based on what, uh, I mentioned to Speaker Delahy, that all the things that we don't have the facility for is going to be outlined and then the architectural design will be completed. And then at that point, that's when we start looking at doing a turnkey, uh, probably are seeking more of the money through federal grants, uh, whether it's, uh, energy efficiency. But the plan is to build a lead, um, lead type of home. I know USCPA is asking us to do reach platinum lead. We, we, that was our intent and still is our intent, but, uh, the reality is they're not sure we can be able to meet that because the price of construction has skyrocketed through, through the, you know, the roof there. When we first started this process, we were looking at maybe, uh, $200 at a square foot for construction on here. And it's, it's well, then exceeded to that now. And so if we add on the need cost, then yes. But, uh, in short, Senator, we have taken all of these things into consideration. So with the $3 million that'll get us the architectural design and then we can do more of this.
Uh, uh, thank you, Walter. And what about the cleanup costs? When, when will you start that?
So the cleanup cost is actually going to be putted by USCPA if, again, based on, uh, the reuse of Guam EPA be, allowed to build their home and headquarters. And so right now, uh, the document that we have is USCPA has, has identified to 4.5 million dollars for the cleanup.
Okay. And, and that will begin as, let's say that the bill passes, once the bill passes, Walter, does that mean the cleanup will start right away?
But, so, uh, again, that's some, that would be working with USCPA and getting their, um, their contractors or their, you know, their assistants. Um, we're looking since 30 September, we're looking sometime in 2022, that it would be initiated to clean up. And again, uh, the hope is, you know, the brawl gets this pandemic under control and then they can come out and do it. It's kind of difficult to be working from San Francisco or LA to Guam to oversee a cleanup. It can be done, but the preference is that they actually could send out their people with their contractors to get it done. So we're definitely targeting 2022. And again, that money is not going to come from both Guam's helpers. It'll be coming from USCPA.
Right. Okay. So, well, you know, for me, I'd like to see that cleanup, you know, done like ASAP, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, if you're saying September 2022, that's.
No, I'm sorry. So it's September 2021. So we're definitely to target as early as, you know, we, we're not going to, we're not going to initiate the cleanup for the next, uh, three months. So it will start up, it's 2022, not September. We're hoping to start it way earlier than September 2022. Sorry about that.
Yeah, kind of worried me there for a minute. Okay, three months because pretty sure now, you know, a lot of people don't realize that area, it's contaminated that, uh, they're going to, especially the neighbors surrounding that area. So be prepared to get phone calls there. And hopefully that, that will extend not only into the footprint of the building, but, uh, exceeding out, out of that footprint, the neighbor's area to, to ensure that they, they're living in a safe area as well. So again.
The, the assessment to take, they take that into account and it did do, uh, extended the contamination. So, uh, it is confined to the area, at least this contamination, this known contamination is confined to the property values that, uh, are listed in, uh, on the property map. And so, um, we, uh, I, I just think it's a good thing to do that we can get this cleaned up, especially with USCPA's assistance and, and their funding to do it.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Walter, and to all of the EPA that has been working on this project for a while. I, I wish you the very best. Of course, we'll have my support on this. And, and then I'm comforted to know that, uh, you're going to be reaching out to the municipal council and, and let them know the full story. So I think they would find, uh, be more amettive to this project. So thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Tite. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill. Uh, certainly it's been a long time in coming for Guam EPA to once again be consolidated with regards to its operations. And with, with that in mind, I'm certainly supportive of the bill. Uh, Guam EPA previously, when we were there in the 1990s, was consolidated, uh, at the IT and E building. And of course, uh, we had to pay rent for the use of that facility. And then when Tizen was transferred back to the government of Guam, uh, Guam EPA was moved up to Tizen. And unfortunately, they were not able to be consolidated in a single building. So since that time, and that was back in the 90s, um, you know, the operations of the agency have been divided. That particular property in Dedido that's been discussed, of course, uh, used to be the transfer site, but it was also was mentioned. A private company had leased that property for many years that, uh, was in the process of moving a substantial number of junk cars. Some of those junk cars were stacked eight, nine, 10 vehicles high. And the initial violation notices that were issued to the company started also in the early 1990s because when we went up there and inspected that location, many of those vehicles were never properly sanitized. Hence you see the contamination that is now in the ground soil and has been there for quite some time. So definitely with regards to brownfield, uh, program to be able to go in and remediate that area and clean it up uh, would be a very positive thing because, you know, of course, uh, we're aware of where the sub-basins are in northern Guam, but any area in northern Guam, certainly because of our limestone, uh, we want to be concerned about any type of contamination of this type. And in that particular case, substantial numbers of vehicles that were not sanitized were, were crushed and brought into that area and stored for a long period of time. So definitely, uh, the action to address environmental cleanup of the soils, I think is very critical and certainly will be very beneficial to the community, considering that that has been contaminated for longer than 30 years now. So I, I think this is a very positive project. I hope that, uh, once the municipal council has more information on this, that they will in turn be supportive. I, I know, uh, some people are of the opinion that every, every village should have a transfer station. And I appreciate, um, solid waste and Mr. Gas and the board members, um, elaborating on that particular issue and why it's, it's more operationally beneficial to actually have, uh, you know, trash being collected by the solid waste authority versus creating and, and operating and manning additional, uh, transfer sites. So I don't really have any questions other than I would like to know, what is the actual acreage of the property? Uh, cause I know it's quite sizable, but I would like to know from Guam EPA, do they know what the, the? Because I know it's quite sizable, but I would like to know from Guam EPA, do they know what the, the actual acreage of this, of the property is? And perhaps what the estimated timeframe would be to do the remediation of the soil? So will that treatment be done on site?
So, so the, thank you, Senator. So the estimated acreage is, I believe, 9.78 acres currently to consolidate the two lots. The remediation that is proposed is for the lead, is to stabilize the lead contamination using phosphate and then basically leaving the lead inert and, and be possibly used for industrial reuse. Because it'll pass, teach it, the leachability testing. So the lead will not go anywhere. So you could actually use it like, per se, you know, if, if there's, you know, just for industrial reuse, it could be allowed. The, the, of course, the pieces of air cores would have to be treated off island. If we don't have the facility to do that locally, so that's something that, that elevates this cost of the cleanup is the ship either has this waste that can't be done locally. But yeah, so the plan is in place for what to do with the contamination there. Of course, as you know, Senator Brown, as you go, I go, I, as you move through a cleanup, certain things can change because you'll, you'll find maybe more or less contaminated property or soil. And so you have to adjust it. But that's why they have dedicated up to 4.5 million to do this remediation.
Well, I certainly hope Guam EPA will use this as an educational opportunity to make the community more aware as you're going through this process. I think this is a great opportunity for the agency to do community outreach just as the process is going along and elaborating further on how you're taking a rather unfortunate situation. Because that was a considerable violation that, that sat for so long with regards to the company. And then, of course, the company not, not continuing to be in operation. So we don't have an entity to pursue. But it just showed you an example of where irresponsible environmental damage occurred and where there's an opportunity certainly to address the cleanup and remediation and reuse of the property. And then also for Guam EPA, you know, while I can be critical and I will be if I see shortcomings by the agency, I think to be able to establish Guam EPA formally and have a home that it can call its own and build upon is something that will be continuously beneficial for the community. And certain of visibility, the, the building will have right off Marine Drive, I think will be a very good thing, like I said, to build upon. The distance will not be that significant. I mean, you're only really, if 10 driving minutes, assuming you're not in major traffic from where your current location is. So I don't think that will be that big an issue as far as the agency being able to get out and respond in the community. So overall, I certainly look forward and will ask the main sponsor to be a second co-sponsor on this bill. Because definitely if there are agencies that we know need to be around to protect our interests and protect our community, it's Guam EPA. And certainly by being able to have a facility that it can call its own, I would look to see the agency to continue to build upon its foundation that's been there since the early 1970s. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I would also like to thank everyone who has testified today and especially Guam EPA for their efforts in this regard. As Walter said, it's been, they've been working on this for years. And with that, I'd like to invite the sponsor of the bill to close. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Speaker. And yes, absolutely, I do invite, I would accept the co-sponsorship of Senator Brown and I, Senator Titegui just messaged me, so, and anybody else on, on this chat. So I do want to thank everybody who's come, come out to testify and provide some very useful information and support of the bill. And I think it's so important that we, you know, take the steps to, to clean up a site that's long been, you know, a site of contamination that, you know, obviously poses a hazard, health hazard to our environment and to our people. So I think this is a good step forward. It's also support Guam EPA's move to consolidate their, their efforts and to find a home as well. So I think there, you know, it's, it's, it's important that we support these efforts. And I look forward to, you know, further improvements on the bill and support by my colleagues. So it's Sisus Mossi.
Sisus Mossi, Senator Perez. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, this committee will consider Bill 185-36COR duly heard. We will now take a two-minute technical recess to reset our audio system. And then we will proceed with the hearing on Bill Number 156-36. So the committee is in recess for two minutes. Sisus Mossi, thoughts?